Here.
Mr. Lawrence Zinn?
Here.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes, here.
Mr. Lawrence?
Here.
Here. All right, first order of business tonight would be acceptance of the minutes from May 9th, 2023. Has everyone had a chance to review?
Yes.
Any changes, revisions?
I think we made that one revision, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so.
Okay, then we made that.
They were amended, so.
Yes.
I make a motion to accept the amended minutes.
All right, there's a motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
And roll call please be. Roll?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
I have to abstain because I was not here that evening, correct?
If you're ready, it's fine.
Yeah, so I'll abstain. Right, so the minutes are approved otherwise. All right, next order of business on the agenda tonight is adjourned public hearing, appeal number 237787, area variance. Christopher and Jasmine Slaughter seeking an area variance section 24037 of district regulations in an R20 zoning district where no more than two accessory structures are permitted on a residential lot. The applicant has a total of four accessory structures, thus requesting a variance to allow the gazebo, shed, artist's studio, and garage to remain. The playhouse that we saw was, had been removed, correct?
Yes.
The property is located at 180 Woodmere Road on 59.30 acres and is identified as tax grid number 625801325728 in the town of Wappinger. Could I have a motion to open the adjourned public hearing?
Make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
On favor? All right, so moved. All righty, please, for the record, your name and address and a brief description of what you need and why you need it.
I'm Jasmine and Chris Slaughter, and we need a variance for the additional structures.
Got it.
And we took the treehouse down.
Sure.
Yeah.
But yeah, okay, we've all been out there, right? Let's see what you got going on. Actually, we, you know, site visit was a couple of weeks ago, actually, right? We were there and got a good look around, showed us everything, beautiful piece of property, I might add. And the structure that was removed is the one with the trees in the back that we went to go look at, right?
Yes.
Yeah, got it. And you guys have any other questions for the applicant?
I think we said the kitchen had to be removed from the studio, was that done?
Stove?
Yep.
And they said it was okay to keep a slop sink?
Okay.
And toilet, and the stove was gone?
It was a cooktop to burn, yes, so we removed that.
Is that okay, Barb?
Well, a slop sink is not a kitchen sink. You had a kitchen in there, so the kitchen sink had to be removed.
So what's a slop sink? You want us to take it out and just make it ugly, like big square, like separate stand?
Well, the kitchen, it shouldn't have been there.
Like a counter?
So the kitchen was supposed to be removed so it doesn't look like a kitchen.
Well, they told us at the town over there that we had to take, we could have a sink, the counters are okay, and we had to take the stove out. And the refrigerator's in there, just because, just a fridge, but we have a fridge in our garage, and the kids have mini fridges in their bedrooms. I mean, I have a counter that we built in our mudroom to make it look pretty of storage, just that there's no sink.
Okay, I guess because this was illegally done and illegally used. So if it had been legally done, it wouldn't have been done that way. So I think at minimum, you have to make a condition that this can't be used as a guest house or as a rental.
Right, oh, of course not, yeah. Well, we didn't know either. I mean, just so everybody knows, there is nowhere in anywhere, I could not find one single piece of information, and this is not for you, this is not any offense, but I could not find one piece of evidence anywhere that Airbnbs were now outlawed for actually friends of ours that were looking for rentals. I mean, everybody wants a rental property in Wappinger, you know, all our friends, we don't have any, but anyway, only after speaking to somebody at the building department did we find out that Airbnbs are basically being outlawed, like, pretty much, they don't want them around in Dutchess County and all that.
We're on TV, and I would like that to be what people think in Wappinger. I can't speak for any other town, but the way our code is written, if it's allowed, it's there. All uses that are allowed, whether it's commercial or residential, are listed. If it's not a listed use, it's not allowed. That's why you can't find it, because it's not allowed.
Well, I'm ignorant about it, so.
And I get a lot of calls, and the thing is, people should call us if they want to use something to find out if it's an allowable use. So I, just for the record, no one here is saying that they're being outlawed all over.
Right. And the structure that we're talking about is the shed?
The artist's studio.
For the artist's studio?
Yes.
Maybe see the barn.
Okay. So, so as we rule, then, I need to stipulate that the artist's studio cannot be used as a rental property?
No, that would not be, no, not at all. We wouldn't do that.
Understood. You understand?
Yes.
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 Okay. Anybody in the audience have any other questions concerning this application? Okay, for the record, any other questions? You guys, any other questions?
No, I don't.
Okay, could I have a motion then, please, to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
And could I have a motion? Oh, okay, a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
So moved. All right, could I have a motion then to grant or deny the applicant the variance?
I'll make a motion to grant the variance with the stipulation that the artist's studio would not be used as a rental accessory apartment.
Yeah.
The benefits can be achieved by another means, there is no undesirable change to the neighborhood, it's a very large property, and the way you have the structures oriented, you know, makes sense in relationship to the fields, you know, that exist. The request is verging on substantial, there's no adverse physical or environmental effect, and it is a self-created difficulty.
All right, you have a second?
No, second.
All right, roll call please be.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence Zinn?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes, but I'd also like to add to what David said, that the size of the property that you have there, almost 60 acres, did weigh in a lot on our decision.
Thank you.
But again, a beautiful piece of property, and you are approved, you're all set.
Thank you, thank you so much.
No great names?
Thanks.
Finally made it.
Finally.
We're finally done, right?
Thank you so much.
Bye-bye.
Okay. All right, next order of business on tonight's agenda, appeal number 237790, area variance. Luis Caturas seeking an area variance section 24037 of district regulations in an HB zoning district where 50 feet to the front yard property line is required, the applicant can provide nine feet for the construction of a covered landing with steps, thus requesting a variance of 41 feet. Where 50 feet to the front yard property line is required, the applicant can provide 25 feet for a half-story pre-existing non-conforming house, thus requesting a variance to allow for a full second floor for bedrooms. Where 30 feet to the rear yard property line is required, the applicant can provide 10 feet, thus requesting a variance of 20 feet for the construction of a 12-foot by 14-foot shed. The property is located at 715 Surgeon Palm Meadow Way, 0.58 acres, and is identified as tax grid number 615702562852 in the town of Wappinger. Could I have a motion to open the adjourned public hearing?
I'll make a motion to open the adjourned public hearing.
Have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
All right, so moved. Luis?
Yes.
Could you, right, as best you can, just give us a brief description of what you need and why you need it, for the public as well as us?
Okay. I need a standard overhand for cover three steps and landing nine feet from the front. Made some debt in the left side of the house, and one addition, 20 feet addition for the rear, and one shed for floor, muro, and garden door.
Gotcha. Again, we were all out there a couple of weeks ago, and took a look to see what you got going on, and did a pretty good job of marking stuff out for us, so we could see what's going on. I know, last, last meeting, there was some discussion of possibly relocating that entrance. I doubt if there was any other questions you guys had concerning that. I, myself personally, don't think that that would be a fair ask, but any other questions you have?
Yeah, I mean, I think you said you were going to review if there was any alternatives? You've had some time to do so, did you come up with anything, or?
Yeah, but I, I not change the idea. I want to keep for my first idea and the plan for doing the front, if you, you let me do that.
So we were asking you about possibly, instead of the front, having an interest on the side, but I understand that that doesn't work for you?
Yes, I tried putting in the side, in the middle of the house, and when the architect designed it, I don't like the design, I want to keep.
It doesn't work with the flow of your house, is that what happened? It doesn't, in other words, the side of the house would disrupt the entire house versus where the front door is versus the side, right? Does that make sense?
Just pick up the mic, Luis.
Yes, I tried, I tried made like this, but I don't like, I want to keep in the front, if you can let me do that, I want to go like this.
Just for the record, the second variance, his house is one and a half stories, he wants to take the second existing floor and just open it up completely, so that he doesn't have the short ceilings. The porch isn't changing, you want to add the portico in the front, right, the cupboard? Those are those two variances, and then, of course, the shed. I don't think you're coming over that porch with the addition. It's just the house. So the house needs to be 50 feet back.
Right.
The existing house is 25.5. So even though it's still half there, the fact that he wants to put a full second floor on in the existing house, that second variance is to the house. It's just he's going up.
The second floor is hanging over the existing porch, though, correct?
Yes, some parts go over the existing porch.
Yeah, so the existing porch is two stories high. It's going up, yeah.
Right.
And there's a new porch in front.
New porch coming in front of?
A new one-story porch in front of the existing.
To go over the steps, right? You want to build a roof over the steps to the front door?
No, just overhand over the step in the front door.
Right.
Yeah, it's only, just cover the step for the snow and water. The step is right there, only I need addition, one landing, and cover this part, but the stair is already there.
So I think what we're saying is that the buildout is not going out any further than the existing home already is, correct?
No.
Right.
The new porch will be coming towards the street.
Luis, come here a second.
Yeah.
Existing porch will become house.
You're putting up this area, right?
In all this area too.
So you want to go over this porch, so this will be the second floor, and then the door.
So then there's a new addition here, which is not screened in.
This is the area.
And you want to put a man in with that?
I only need the landing.
That's existing, no?
It's not going to be the overhand.
No, the existing porch.
Okay, but this second floor is going, is squaring this off.
And they're adding a sort of top of the existing porch.
So he is squaring off the front porch and going over that.
Yes. I'm sorry, Barb, say it again.
On the plan, you see the house, and then it says porch.
Yep.
He's going to lift that up as well for part of the second floor, for the bedrooms.
That's my thought, yeah.
The house, do you know how many square feet? How big is your house right now? I know it's a small house.
Saying, I got in the blueprint and say how big is the house right now, how impressed, how it's perfectly impressed. I not remember by my mind, but it's already there.
I think you see it on this last page.
Yep.
So the second floor will go over that porch?
Mm-hmm.
And then the steps. You can go back.
Side of the new porch, or side of the new porch is what we want in the front?
B, did you have a copy of the plans in that, in that, did you have a copy of the plan in that package? It's not, I think we only got elevations. So existing?
Right.
Extension over existing. New porch of eight by five with three footsteps.
Eight by five, so five feet coming plus steps.
So I mean, I only, you know, if this went this way.
All right, but then.
But then it affects the symmetry, I think.
Not only that, I mean, not only that, but.
Yeah, then you have, you know.
Right, yeah, that's.
All right. Can I see what you're saying? Yeah, it's like.
It's like a Hill here and Stuff style.
You guys get it?
I understand what he's doing. I understand, yeah, I understand.
Flight by eight, 38 by five.
That's, it's not about the question, this gets pushed out here, and of course, you got an ID right there. There's not a lot of room or space to do anything.
He had it pretty clearly marked when we went out there.
Yeah.
I understand what he was saying. Thank you, though.
Then I only have one more question. On the plot plan, there's a section that's crossed out and says overhang above front door. Not doing this time, will apply for a separate permit, so that still holds, you're not going to have an overhang added to the front of the house?
And apply in second permit later?
Yes, that's what it says on here. That's the only thing I just didn't understand, if that was being done now or not.
I think that was so that it wouldn't be rejected and need variances.
Okay.
He initially was not asking for a shed.
Okay.
And he was asking for the front porch and an addition in the rear, so if you look at the bottom, I rejected it, and then I crossed it out, because he said he wouldn't do the porch now later on, and then we'd go later for variance. Then he came in with those plans, and he needed the variance for the second floor, so I said, even if you don't do the front porch now, you still need the variance to one time, and then he said he may want a shed, that's why he's asking you for all three now. They may not all be done right away, but he wanted to have the variances in place.
So that could be crossed out, then, that not doing this time?
Well, I think now, with the new plans, he would be doing it all at once.
I just wanted to be clear.
Right.
Any other questions from the board?
Mr. Gutierrez? Do you know when the house was built, the original house? Do you have any idea when that original house was built? Your house?
My house, what?
When it was built.
When?
Yeah.
I want to start more soon possible.
Okay.
If you give me the permit, I will start next week.
No, no, he's asking the original date of construction.
The original, when your house was built?
Like 1920 is 1930?
How old?
1965, I think.
Okay, thank you.
The original builder.
So prior to that?
Yeah.
Pretty much. We are not asking for existing, but now what we are asking is how much of it is needed.
Yeah. If the new variance is really just for that covered?
Right, so it has nothing.
Entry one?
How old, how, so they like, cool or no cool? That's a little too.
Anybody in the audience have any comments or questions about this application? Nope. All right, for the record, no other comments or questions. Could I have a motion to close the adjourned public hearing?
I make a motion to close public hearing.
Have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
So moved. Could I have a motion then to grant or deny the applicant the variances? Now, Barbara, we got to do each one separately?
Yeah, because one is a sep, yeah, they're pretty different.
Got it, I know it. So guys, we're going to have to address each variance separately. So then, can I have a motion then to grant or deny the applicant the variances one at a time? I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to, as far as variance number one goes, I'll make a motion to grant the applicant the variance, I'll read it as well. Where 50 feet to the front yard property line is required, the applicant can provide nine feet for the construction of a covered landing with three steps, thus requesting a variance of 41 feet. The benefit really can't be achieved by any other feasible means, it's not going to create any undesirable effects to the neighborhood, the request is substantial, but that in and of itself would not be enough for me to deny. The request would not have any adverse physical effects on the neighborhood, and the alleged difficulty is self-created. Variance number two, I will again vote positive. Where 50 feet to the front yard property line is required, the applicant can provide 25 feet for a half-story pre-existing non-conforming house, thus requesting a variance to allow for a full second floor for bedrooms. Again, the benefit cannot be achieved by any other feasible means, will not create any undesirable change to the neighborhood, the request again is substantial, but again, not enough for me to vote or deny. The request will not have any adverse effects on the environment, and it is again self-created. All right, last but not least, the next variance, where 30 feet to the rear yard property line is required, the applicant can provide 10 feet, thus requesting a variance of 20 feet for the construction of a 12-foot by 14-foot shed. Again, that benefit cannot be achieved by any other feasible means, it will not create any undesirable change to the neighborhood, the request again is substantial, there will be no adverse effects on the environment, and the alleged difficulty is self-created. I'd like to note, too, just the configuration of the property and the surrounding properties did weigh in on our decision, or my decision, to grant the variances. You got a lot of tight spaces there, confined spaces where you have to work in, and your surrounding properties, I think, are fine with what you want to do. So again, I vote positive for all three variances. Could I have a second?
Pete, before you go, just so you know, the initial house was built in 1937.
Okay.
So it is old, and the cottage was built in 1959.
Got it.
Thank you, thank you.
Not to get around.
I will second all three of those. Do I have to do one at a time?
I think we should do one at a time, yeah.
Barbara, do we have to vote individually, you think?
Yeah, I think we should.
I think you should.
Okay.
So on the first one, I will second.
All right. So then, if we do, if he seconds it, then we should have roll call for each one. All right, can roll call please be?
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence Zinn?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
We are voting for number one?
Yes.
No.
Mr. Lawrence?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes. All right, so variance number one has been granted. Could I have a motion then? All right, could I have a?
I will second, I will second motion number two.
All right, roll call please be.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence Zinn?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes. All right, so your second variance has been granted, and as for variance number three?
I will second.
Have a second?
I will second number three.
All right, roll call please be.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence Zinn?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes. All right, so your variances have been granted, so you're all set. You can.
So just for Luis, tomorrow, B does her magic, and then this will go to the building department, and they'll review your plans, and you'll get a call next week to pick up your building permit.
Okay, thank you. I will leave it to everybody.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up on the agenda, adjourned public hearing, appeal number 237793, area variance. Michelle Marie Heineman seeking an area variance section 24037 and 24021F, one of district regulations in an R40 zoning district, where two accessory structures are permitted on a parcel, the applicant has seven accessory structures, thus requesting a variance to allow for the two sheds, two garages, two gazebos, three apartment structure to remain. Where a fence can only be four feet in height in the front yard, the applicant is requesting to erect a six-foot fence, thus requesting a variance to allow a six-foot fence in the front yard. The property is located at 1109 dash, or through, 1111 Route 376, on a total of 25.2 acres, and is identified as tax grid numbers 635801205670, 21.4 acres, and 635801219740, 3.8 acres, in the town of Wappinger. Could I have a motion to open the adjourned public hearing?
I'll make a motion to open.
Have a second?
Hold on.
So, on favor?
Aye.
So moved. Okay, hello. For the, for the record.
Number of the board?
Gotcha.
Sarah Ryan, Van de Water and Van de Water, on behalf of the applicant, Michelle Marie Heineman.
Gotcha.
We are here after re-noticing the public hearing to include the additional accessory structure, that makes seven. I also brought plans from Michelle Marie's architects, just like we did for all of the other buildings. This structure is used as your.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
That's the, which structure is this? That's the one that's used in the house?
This is the large shed near the pool.
Okay.
Between houses.
Is that at one time called the cabana? Did I see cabbana somewhere on the table?
Yes, there is a smaller shed, which we have called the pool there.
Attached to that?
It's across the pool.
See, the additional structure, I think, that we had found last meeting was the garage on the way to the apartment building, correct?
That was originally noticed.
Was that the original?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, there was the detached garage with the studio space above it.
Uh, no, that's one across the way, right?
Yeah, that's right.
Cool.
Good show.
This is the one with the studio above, correct? Coming here, small shed, garage, this is the plating shed, gazebo's down here.
Yes, this was the additional structure, which was identified. Everything else has been.
Okay, because what was this garage? I think this was the one that we had thought was additional.
No, that was original with the house. That was noticed.
Okay.
Right, I believe we called it a shed.
Okay.
So on this plan, for my, what are the seven?
This is the additional structure that was just noticed.
One.
This is the detached garage with the studio space above it.
Three gazebo, four plating shed, five, another gazebo, six garage, shed.
Garage.
Seven is.
Really shed. Really shed. That is the, that's going to be the caretaker's cottage. If right now it's three apartments, that's going to be converted to comply into a caretaker's cottage.
The one-story building?
Yes.
There is also a blueprint of where.
Yeah.
Where's the fence going? I wasn't able to make the site visit, so...
So the fence is...
Just a...
Oh, yes.
So the fence is going to circumnavigate the property.
You have the existing fence here, right, so...
It's going to extend.
We haven't heard about the sides, because you can do that as a right. So we're talking here?
Uh, it's going to be set back just as far from property line?
So here?
Yes. To circumnavigate, and then additionally, across this length requires the variance.
Set back or on the property line?
Set back.
So somewhere to this point, right? We're saying it's this, this is the...
Correct. Yes, the determination was made by the workforce officer that this length requires the variance because it is a budding Dogwood Hill roadside.
Check, so this is the green, I'm gonna put the proposed six-foot high fence?
Uh, it's going to be across the length of the property.
This is where they're only allowed four feet.
And wherever there's road frontage, everywhere else has a right to be built, that's it.
Gotcha.
Gotcha.
And it may be that way for the...
How do the caretakers' apartments work, Barbara?
Well, she would have, she's going to have to go to the planning board for a special use permit. You need to have at least ten acres, which she has.
Okay.
And then, they'll go through the process with her. It will have to be reconfigured, because right now, it's three tiny apartments. Do you still have, you have a tenant still in one of them? There's no one in there? So, this will need reconfiguration, it'll need health department approval, and then there'll be conditions for this. So it's not to be a rental, but she can have a caretaker on it, or she could go for a guesthouse. But this would all be done at the planning board to legalize that one.
Correct. We're here first, as first step, to make sure that we can have the structure.
Just trying to clarify, you know, like the first, you know, one we looked at, this meeting, it had a similar structure, where we're having them take out the kitchen. So they, in theory, could have also done a caretaker's apartment. If they wanted to go that route, they couldn't rent it, it would be a...
Correct.
Yes, so all of the structures meet the setback requirement to the code. They're all centered in the property, close to the house. Many of the structures, I think all of the structures have been there since the early nineties to the early two thousands, they were destructive. That's prior to the code change requiring or limiting the number of accessory structures to two per residential parcel. The fence is going to be installed at six feet along all edges of the property line. We are here to get variance to make that uniform.
And we asked what was going on in the woods, because when we were on, during the site visit, it seemed like the woods had been kind of significantly cleaned out, and we're in the process of being regraded, you know, we were just...
Uh, so the applicant has, uh, we worked with the building department to pick up a, an application for grading permit for the work that was done there.
But no intent to build other structures in that area that's being...
I can let Michelle Marie speak to the intention.
No, absolutely not, yeah. No, basically, they were just cleaning the leaves and the forest debris. That's it. I mean, there was no intention to build anything else.
Correct, the intention is to put grass there.
Yeah, exactly.
It was cleared out very, very nicely. Like, only thing that could go there would be grass at this point.
Exactly.
And the big logs were set in a, I don't know, some sort of a pattern to me when I saw them, the trees that were cut, or...
Yeah, he made a little path, a little garden path.
A big path, please.
Yes, so there was some discussion at the last meeting about why a six-foot fence is needed. And I will let Michelle Marie speak to some of her experiences on the property. For, well, I'll start. One of the things is that there's a nearby house that has fallen into disrepair. There are pests that come through, there are foot squatters in the house. It is offensive to privacy and frankly safety of the occupants.
Yeah, absolutely. I just would like to add that I bought this house in nineteen ninety-eight. I've had it for a very, very long time. And the reason I'm doing it, I actually have a photo. I don't know if you've seen the house, but it's right beside my house, and unfortunately, it's a hoarder house. And squatters are there, and we've had a lot of intruders on the grounds, so much so that one even entered the house, and really scared us. And I thought, you know, I think we've reached a point where we need to just put a fence up so we all feel safe. And I think that this law is relatively new, because when I went to Mid Hudson Fence Company, they didn't even know about it. And when I ordered the fence, she just did a six-foot fence. And then it was when I came to the town that I was told you can't, it's only four feet. So they didn't, I think it's a pretty new law. But four feet, you know, you can see over. I mean, it's just, it's just not high enough to give that privacy. I, it's really hard to look at this on top of it being, you know, I don't know what's going on with this, but...
There is enforcement on it.
Yeah, I'm glad, because it's, it's, it just devalues the neighborhood, frankly, and there's a lot of care that goes into the homes, and animals, and intruders, and...
And this is located on the Dogwood Hill?
Yeah.
Roadside, the property.
That, that house is not directly abutting your property, is it?
Oh, we see it, we can, I can actually...
But it's not directly abutting, right? Because there's a house that's quite nice, actually, that appears to be abutting.
All of the houses are nice on the neighborhood.
But that one that you're speaking about is...
It's right beside the house.
Can you share with us, I plan which house that is?
Do you want to give them this?
Sure, I think they, do you know which?
Yes, this is right here.
This house?
Yeah.
Okay.
We did see the house. We did see it when we were up there, it is quite a...
I don't recall which one it was, no.
Quite a mess, yes.
But it's this property, first lot, yes?
Yeah, so it's not directly abutting.
No.
Okay, thank you.
This house.
Thank you.
Okay, so the second one over, is this lot right here?
Correct. Yes?
You got a definite elevation standpoint, is that that house, the low elevation in her?
It's kind of a hill that's kind of, it's kind of sloping this way. So from the road, you can see the house, right? You can see over the fence that's there, right? So it's kind of sloping up. You know, the house is located, you know, the house then here, which seemed like it was in fairly well, fairly good shape. So here, they would still have it, I think it would be, you know... There, you have six foot as a right. The view's looking, you know, over...
And again, the property is about twenty-five acres in total, with two separate parcels. A lot of it is wooded. Michelle Marie has dealt with people who walk their dogs on the property, and she would also like that one to stop as well.
What type of fence you're proposing?
Uh, so it is, I believe I submitted a sample.
Six-foot white vinyl?
I can show you some of the fence that's already been installed.
All right. Got it, got it. Six-foot white vinyl.
Right, so here is some of the fences are being installed on the sides of the property that do not let through. So it would be that all the way around.
So you have this existing red sole on the back.
Yeah, there's that, the black and white picture is existing fencing?
On this property?
On the back, yeah, on the back piece. Basically blocking out probably that hoarder house looks like.
Not at all, it doesn't block it out at all.
And the other one is just an artist depiction, or just a sample of what?
Yeah, that was a sample I pulled from online, so you can see the material.
Got it. Now, this section of fence, though, would be quite visible, right? From, from the cul-de-sac up here?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the cul-de-sac would end in, I assume you'd have a gate, correct? You'd have a matching white vinyl gate?
Yeah, I'd like to do that, yes.
With the plan is?
Will that be an electric gate?
Their drive kind of goes through and out.
I don't know.
Just so you know, so if you do decide to do an electric gate of whatever size is approved tonight, just to get a building permit for the electric of it.
Has to get approval for the electric part?
Yes.
Pete, can I ask a question?
Sure, yeah.
Would you consider a different type of fence than this?
Like what?
The beautiful piece of property.
Well, this is a privacy fence, and...
I understand that...
Most of it's going in the forest, so, I mean, this fence, this was six hundred square feet, it was forty thousand dollars, and it's just going in the forest. Are you saying because it's not aesthetically pleasing?
Yeah. I'm not saying that it's not aesthetically. I mean, I'm just in my, what I think, for what I would think would be nice there, is not that. I understand, like, the very first time that you came in, you were talking more about, not so much about privacy, but more security about the neighbors. That's what I got from the meeting, walking their dog on the property.
Yeah, I was in here before, but...
And you wanted to keep them out.
Well, this, this is a privacy fence, and I think it would be a waste of money, too. I have another type of fence on three-seventy-six that's quite ornate.
Yes.
And really lovely.
Yes.
You know, but I think to put that type of money, invest that type of money into a fence that really is a back entrance, and I don't want to use. We really don't want to use it. It's really just for, like, you know, a few deliveries and some of the staff. I really want to get away from that, that back area.
Consider, I think what Tom's going with in it, and myself as well, since it is in the woods, right? Sorry, that it doesn't like bam hit you in the, you know, face when you're looking at it. Maybe more, more aesthetically pleasing, or softer, maybe like a wood type of privacy fence? Cedar or something like that?
It's interesting, I was in the forest with my husband, we were walking around, and all the neighbors came out. And literally, like, they came out, and they were like, oh my God, we love this fence, you know, it's so great, because we like our privacy, too. And I actually, I mean, the fence is okay, but I mean, for me, it was really about, you know, I'd rather put that money into something else around the house, you know, because it's costly, and I really want to create this privacy for everybody. But I guess to answer your question, the neighbors loved it. I mean, we had like four or five, they all came out when they saw us walking around. And nobody objected, like, nobody, they liked it fine. It's kind of like the white picket fence, right? It's like everybody's dream to have a white picket fence, so...
I mean, I think you're thinking more, you know, chain link, something you can see through a little bit more, but...
I think more, I'd like to see something a little bit more open, that's me.
I want privacy, I really don't want intruders on the grounds. It makes me nervous, we've had a lot of intruders. People curious about the house, they think it's a school, they think it's a hotel. We had a woman, we had one woman that just came into the house with luggage, and my house, we were, we were petrified. You know, I don't want to see through, and I, and I don't think the neighbors want that either. I mean, I think that, you know, it's a large piece of property, and how it's situated, you still can see it, you know, because it's up on a hill, so everybody can still see us. But it just kind of gives you that feeling like, okay, we're safe. And two of the intruders that we had were walking their dog, and my husband confronted them, and they were very aggressive, surprisingly, and they were like, well, we've been, we've been in this forest, you know, for twenty-five years. Okay, but it's still my property, you know, so now we would prefer you not to, and... I don't know, it was kind of shocking, so, I mean, and that's what motivated this, because I would rather put my resources elsewhere, frankly, than fencing in all this property. But I think after COVID, things just changed. I mean, we just started seeing more people on the grounds. And it just takes one or two of those situations, and you, it's unsettling. I mean, it's really unsettling. So I don't, I appreciate what you're saying, I mean, I love beauty. I mean, I love, you can see the front of my house, I mean, it's, I love that. But I think the message is stay out, you know? I think the message is privacy, and, and I think that the white is fresh, and it's pure, and I think it's, I think it's okay.
In terms of the number of structures, has any thought been given to removing any of them? Or are they all one hundred percent necessary?
Well, they've been there since nineteen ninety-nine, so I haven't really had that conversation with anybody.
It's a substantial variance? I mean, we don't usually give that many structures?
Well, again, it is a large piece of property. It is set back from the woods, all the structures are close to the house, some of them need setbacks. You know, there's...
I mean, we just looked at a sixty acre property, and we gave them four, and they removed one.
Understood.
But why?
Just the number of accessory structures we're allowing in the town? I mean, basically, this is to stop people from having just villages of garages and legal apartments.
Predated the new law. I mean, this was done in nineteen ninety-nine. This was, this was done a very long time ago. Pardon me?
You're talking about the fence?
She's talking about the number of apartments.
accessory structures.
Ten years.
Ten years?
And what was it before then? They could do however many?
They didn't have a size or a number before then.
There wasn't a size or a number before then.
So technically, they should be grandfathered in. We want to come and get them legalized as, you know, a way to get the property compliant.
I think as far as the fence goes, I'm looking at either privacy or security, six feet or four feet?
Well, the six feet would accomplish both.
I know.
And that's really what the plan is for, privacy and security on our property.
Ma'am, I was just looking through all the paperwork. You have fence running along three-seventy-six now, right?
Correct.
Do you know how many feet of fence that is, approximately?
I don't know.
And do you know the height of that fence?
Well, it was five feet.
Ten.
And then I had to get a variance, and then I had, I have a variance, right. And then I had to plant pine trees in front, I think, twenty feet high or something. But I have a variance, I got a variance.
I'm just asking as...
Right, yeah.
Because I looked through all the paperwork, and I just didn't see that part.
True, thank you.
And again, the six-foot fence is being installed on the other sides of the property that do not require the variance. This variance would simply just make it uniform throughout.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does the current six-foot fence run into this one?
It starts here, and ends, ends there. Right, there's a gate.
But this is the front?
Yeah.
That's right, the new white fence?
And a different height.
Right, so the new, the new white fence, that would be six foot. If it were to be four, is it going to be hitting a six-foot fence at some point? Some intersection? So you'll be doing this?
Yes, it would be.
It will?
Okay.
Yeah, here you jump up, right?
Got you.
Yeah.
And that's, you know, a metal fence with the, you know, accent.
It's nice fence.
But I think the reason why this law is new and why it was made is because of site distance, correct? And this doesn't fall into that category at all?
No, I'm sure there are other reasons as well, but that's really, neither here nor there, really.
Pardon me?
It's just, it's neither here nor there, that's, it's, the ordinance is four foot. And so we have to decide whether we would grant you that variance or not, regardless of why it's six foot, right? Can I ask any other, any other questions you have?
How far would the fence be set back? Do you have an actual dimension of that?
Uh, I believe it's about nine feet.
It's nine feet from the property line?
Yes. I would have to double-check with the fence company, but the plan was to make it well within the setbacks, away from the property line.
And even further in the front, it's like twenty, it's maybe forty. It's quite a bit on three-seventy-six.
Okay, like, I feel like some of the law is just that we don't have a six-foot fences lining all the roads.
Sure.
Right, so the setback helps.
So I think, so our concerns are more in this area, nothing else.
The cul-de-sac area?
Yeah. Yeah, so this one is, this is the area where we're more debating, like four or six feet, this area or this area or this area, we don't have any concern.
Well, they can do this now, or do that.
So do we have concern here?
Yes.
Because this one has four feet, a six feet and eight feet height anyway. Yeah, that's the red.
There?
But this one, they already have, they already have eight feet, eight feet here. So having six feet, I don't think in my mind big concern, because this one already have that one, right? So we're giving extra here, that's also in my mind is not a big deal. Big deal in my opinion is this area where the neighbors are doing anything, and they have to see that thing all the time. So in my mind, I was just trying to see, this is the concern, anything else, I think we can find, I mean, we'll measure it as long as.
I mean, there are people side property line.
Yes, right, but that's only concern, right? So in my mind, I mean, this one has all different heights. If you look at that from distance, they're all different height, so having.
Yes, intentionally.
Right, right, exactly. So now this road is no picked up, I think, so here's the concern.
I get that. All right, any other questions?
No.
Anybody in the audience have any other questions or concerns regarding this application? No? All right, then can I have a motion then?
Before, I just want to ask one more thing about this. Can you come over, I can just show?
Sure.
So this is the, right, so this is, this is the fence, new fence we have planned, thinking about six feet?
Yes.
And here also?
No, not here. So that does not above any roadways, so that may go up at six feet as of the right.
Yeah, that's also side property.
It is over here.
Over here, right, yes.
That would require the six-foot variance as well as this length.
And your, your setback at the cul-de-sac, that's all right?
Correct, yes.
So if we conditioned it that it had to be setback nine feet, does that work within your current plan?
It will, yes.
Okay, so now, I have a motion to close the adjourned public hearing.
I'll make a motion.
You have a second?
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
So moved. All right, then, can I have a motion then to grant or deny the applicant the variances or address them separately, right? All right, so then, could I have then a motion to grant or deny the applicant variance, number one, which pertains to the number of accessory structures?
I'll make a motion to grant with understanding that these predate the code, and this is a legalization of existing structures, with the condition, obviously, that the apartments be switched to caretaker apartments, which will require planning board approval. The benefit can be achieved by no other feasible means, there is no undesirable, undesirable change to the neighborhood, the request is, is substantial, there's no adverse physical or environmental effect, and difficulty is not self-created since this predates the number of structures required.
All right, then we'll do a roll call on this variance.
I'll second.
I'm sorry, you have a second? So we have a second, and then roll call?
Yeah.
Mr. Delaporte?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Delaporte?
Yes, and I'll just, I'll add to David's comment, too, that since this does predate zoning, then that, of course, would weigh heavily on our decision.
Thank you.
All right, so then we go to variance number two, the pertaining to the fence. Could I have a motion to grant or deny the applicant the variance for the fence? Six-foot fence, I should say.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to grant with the condition that is setback nine feet, you know, along the front property line, it is an extension of an already approved condition that you've, you've received. Along the rear, it's alongside property lines, it's, doesn't feel like a front yard, I think, to, to most people.
Thank you.
And we understand your concerns about the privacy. Benefit can be achieved by another means, it is not an undesirable change, the request is not substantial, there's no adverse physical or environmental effect, and the difficulty is self-created.
Tom, second?
Second.
Thank you.
You have a second? All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Delaporte?
No. Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Delaporte?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so your variances both have been granted.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
All right, next up on the agenda tonight is a public hearing, appeal number two-three-seven-seven-nine-two, area variance. Brian A. Raguzzi seeking an area variance, section two-fourty-thirty-seven of district regulations, in an R forty zoning district where twenty-five feet to the side left property line is required, the applicant can provide six point five feet for the legalization of a twelve-foot by fourteen-foot woodshed, thus requesting a variance of eighteen point five feet. The property is located at nine Larissa Lane on one point one acres and is identified as tax grid number six-three-five-eight-zero-three-two-four-six-four-six-four in the town of Wappinger. All right, sir, for the record, your name and address.
Yes, my name is Brian Raguzzi at nine Larissa Lane, Wappinger Falls, New York. I'm trying to get a variance for my shed because of the proximity to my property line.
Right, and we were, we were all out at the property here.
We need to open a public hearing.
Would I not do that?
No.
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
Okay, so we're going to back up a little bit, all right? So I'm, I'm going to read again the appeal, no?
I'll just open the public.
Okay, I get a motion, please, to open the public.
Motion, open public hearing.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
So moved. All right, Mr. Raguzzi, for the benefit of the board, anybody listening in, what you need, why you need it?
Basically, I need a variance for my shed. I replaced the shed that I had, that was original in the same spot for, since nineteen seventy-four, so I basically put it in the same spot and looking for a variance to keep it where it is.
Got it, and we were all out there Saturday. Take a look, let me see what you got going on here.
The sheds in the, in the gap.
So we have, we could have a picture, right?
The shed.
Yeah, yeah. Got it. Got it, and we saw what you got going on here, here, it was pretty tight quarters.
I think we just asked you to confirm, you know, you're hundred percent okay with the dimension given?
Yes.
You were measuring off the house, right?
Yes, yes.
The shed we measured was not twelve, was ten, or I'm mistaken.
Yeah, it was a little bit smaller.
Yes, right, so what said size was maybe ten and a half.
So, so the shed size is, is not quite twelve by fourteen, but it doesn't impact the variance.
Does it impact us?
It does.
Does it?
Because if it's, so we have twelve by fourteen.
Right.
So if it's, what size is it?
Ten and a half by maybe fourteen, but so small.
Then it would only have to be, what?
No.
I thought it was the length.
Yeah.
The width, right.
But it would only need ten feet, how, do you know how, have you measured this shed? How big is it?
We did, we did Saturday. Actually, David's ordered.
Because you originally said it was ten by sixteen, so that's a hundred and sixty square feet, so that needed the twenty-five. If it goes under a hundred and forty-four.
Yes.
You know, then it really only needs to be ten. So the variance then was for twelve by fourteen, so it was still over. But if in fact it's less than a hundred and forty-four square feet, then it needs ten feet, so it would need a smaller variance.
Right.
Because it still only has six point five. And it wouldn't have to be published because you can always go smaller.
Right.
You can go bigger.
Right.
Actually, it would be the same variance.
So it should not have any impact?
Not really.
Right, yes.
But for the record, you should tell us exactly so that if we ever come out, or when you go to sell the house, and we expect it to be this, and it's smaller, we'll think you changed it.
Okay.
So it's really in your best interest to make sure we know exactly how big it is.
Right, right.
So we're saying it's ten by fourteen? Is that what we're saying?
It's like ten, ten and a half by fourteen.
Ten and a half by fourteen. It's like ten and a half.
Right.
But it's published as twelve by fourteen.
But it's small.
Right.
Actually, what it is, it's not the size of the shed, what you published was the variance, so regardless of the size, he needed ten feet, even if it was eight by eight.
Right.
So the variance stands six point five is what was published. The size of the shed, in this instance, doesn't really matter, but we should get clarity for your sake going down the road.
Okay, so it takes it from twenty-five feet required to ten feet required, so it's not as big of a variance?
Right. So that we will change. If it's ten and a half by fourteen, it's less than a hundred and forty-four square feet, so if you are inclined to approve it, it should be the new size, and where ten feet is required, the applicant can provide six point five, so it's a much smaller variance that you'll be approving.
Got it, you got on it?
Yes, yes. We need, but you don't need to republish them?
No, because the setback's the same.
Setback, yeah.
So we clarified.
This is just to make sure our record is clean, right? So it's good to have the right size.
Right, no, it's less.
So from our point of view, it does not make any impact on the variance you're asking.
Right, so instead of, instead of needing eighteen point five variance, he needs a three point five, which is much better.
Yes, right, definitely, yeah. So should we postpone it and ask for next time verification?
Well, he's going smaller, well.
But from record point of view.
Yeah, if it's, are you sure it's under?
Definitely front is ten and, less than ten and a half, not twelve.
And by fourteen.
We did not verify.
We measured the length, we weren't thinking that, we, we were trying to just figure out exactly what the property line was.
Would you feel more comfortable making sure you know the size of the shed? It's not holding you up from anything.
No.
Then let's wait, because if it's eighteen, then we may have to.
Right, then whatever, in case it's over a hundred and forty-four square feet, they can't give you three point five, then they have to give you the eighteen point five.
Okay, all right. So, yeah, I would say we would feel more.
So let's. We should know.
Yeah.
I will have one of the inspectors go out and measure it and then give us a report.
Do we need to reschedule it?
Yeah, just adjourn it for the next meeting.
I think I might have one of them coming out in the next three, four days anyway, so.
Well, I'll let them know to put that, and I want an inspection sheet, and this way we'll send it to the zoning board, and then we'll be very clear the next time.
Okay, okay. Because on the owner consent form, it does say ten by.
There's a lot of numbers.
Yeah.
Ten by sixteen or something.
Ten by six, yeah. It says ten by sixteen, yeah.
So if it's ten and a half by sixteen, then this whole thing has stayed as is.
That's correct.
Right.
But if it's ten, ten or ten by fourteen, then become less, small mediums.
So it's better to be clear.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's what I'm pretty sure is, I don't know how it got changed to twelve.
I don't know, but it's been changed like three times, so I think it's better.
When I purchased it, I'm, it was ten by sixteen.
We're going to make this real clear.
We're going to be very clear.
This is what we're going to do, we're going to adjourn this public hearing, we're going to get an exact measurement of this shed, and then you will not have to come back again for us.
One more time.
For this, so I need, I need a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
I make a motion to adjourn.
You have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
So moved, so the next public hearing or adjourned public hearing would be when?
Thirteen.
Thirteen, so six, June thirteenth. So on June thirteenth, you'll be back.
It sounds like you'd be first, so you're not going to have to sit through the whole meeting.
I'll be first?
I would assume so, yeah.
Yeah. All right, so we'll see you on the thirteenth, all right?
Okay.
And we'll know exactly what size your shed.
All right, thank you, guys.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
Good night, Brian.
All right, next up on the agenda, appeal number two-three-seven-seven-nine-four, area variance, Enrique and Erica Penafield seeking an area variance, section two-fourty-thirty-seven of district regulations, in an R forty zoning district where twenty-five feet to the side right, side right property line is required, the applicant can provide seven feet for the installation of an eighteen-foot above-ground pool, thus requesting a variance of eighteen feet. The property is located at ninety-six Robinson Lane and is identified as tax grid number six-four-five-nine-zero-three-zero-five-eight-four-one-two in the town of Wappinger. Could I have a motion to open the public hearing?
I make a motion to open public hearing?
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
So moved. Okay, for the record, your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Erica, this Enrique Penafield, we live in ninety-six Robinson Lane, Wappinger Falls.
Great, and a brief description of what you need and why you need it.
Okay, so we would like to install an eighteen-feet-above-ground pool. We just have one before that we just realized that was in the line of the property, so now the timing for us that we have to move it in, so that's what we would like to do now, but let's just, you could see it, we can just provide seven feet from the line property.
Gotcha. Got you, yeah, we were all out there on Saturday.
Yes.
Again, so what you got going on, kind of unique piece of property, right?
Yeah, you have a clear view.
You got, you got a lot of things to fit into a small space, right?
Yes, mhm.
And you marked everything out for us perfectly, so we, we could see.
Yeah, we did our diligence.
Exactly what you want to do, and where you are, property line, and everything was located with pins, it was great. Very clear, straightforward, as far as I'm concerned. If you guys have any other, any other questions for the applicant? You know, I think we, we all pretty, pretty good idea, you guys were great, you know, very informative when we were out there. Have no other questions? Anybody in the public have any questions? Go right ahead, can, for your name and address, please.
You have to come up to the microphone.
Come up to the microphone.
Step up to the mic.
Hi.
Hello.
Kaylee, and this is Michael Trimboli, we reside at seven Robinson Garden Drive.
Gotcha.
Our property line actually busts up to the Penfields.
Right.
And we, our surveys are actually, they don't, yeah, they don't match, so I just didn't notice that they took down the pool, because it was on, according to their survey, it's on, it was on their property line, and they had to be a twenty-five foot from it. According to our survey, it's actually, it was nine point eight feet over our property line, according to our survey. So we don't, whatever they do, whatever variance, that's fine, we just don't want it, according to our survey, to be on our property at all, just because originally, we wanted them to sign, when we first moved in, we moved in two years ago, we wanted them to just sign something stating like, God forbid anything happened, and somebody drowned or something, whatever, we just wanted all liability not to rely on us, the pool could stay, whatever, they didn't want to sign it, so that's when we got the survey going and everything else, and we realized that it just doesn't match up. So the only thing is, we're concerned about is if that pool is still technically on our property line on our survey, we're still worried that what if something does happen, then we could be liable for it.
You're sure?
First of all, about she saying that we want to pass to sign a paper, first of all, I can sign anything that they, somebody just tell me to sign in.
Sure.
Secondly, according to our survey, like you have in your hands, the pool was in our property, so that's why I didn't, you know, want to sign anything, and I told them, we're going to go into the town, everything is fine, so now I spoke to the town, I spoke to Barbara in that time, and I said, here is my survey, the, the, the pool is in our property, so she said, okay, so now you have to deal with us, because you have to move So she said, okay, so now you have to deal with us, because you have to move it anyways, because it's in the line. So that's what we are doing now.
Yeah, yeah, I, I get that. Do you have a copy of your survey? See, this is their third survey, stand by a licensed engineer, right?
That's interesting.
So I moved here March twenty, twenty one, right? This property right here, there's a house here, there was a trampoline there, that's a whole nother issue, right, down here. So this guy who owned this house, he owned all this. When they subdivided it, they built these houses, right? So I have my property, it's way down to this guy's driveway, and through his retaining wall, I can't mow any of this. And the pool is on my property, so that's why I was, well, I really, I don't wanna deal with it, you know, probably something happens. But whoever made this, it's, it's just not, it needs to change.
Chicken wire fence there.
We saw that.
God forbid someone, God forbid someone walks out, trips. It's just, it's a terrible property line. So I don't know who approved all this, but they need to figure something out.
So.
Because the grass is so high, I have to put myself in danger, going down. The street with my mower, and they won't let me go through the driveway no more, so I can't mow it, so. What do I, what do I do?
This is large, a very high grass.
But something happened when, at some time, when one of the properties were either in a lot line or the subdivision, somebody didn't file a new Schedule A with some, either their deed or the Penfield's deed. But that's a lawyer issue, that would have to be researched at the county, the Schedule As.
Well, I hear Robert's line, he used it every time. That was my lawyer that I signed off one night, after closing. And I mean, there's a house, the pool is one day, but there's a house almost on the property.
But there is an issue with these two surveys, because both of them are surveyors, they're both licensed. From what they see, they're both correct, obviously they both can't be correct, so there's an error.
I do know our guy, he went back, I think, three times and found different deeds or something, like way back when.
Right, so there's a problem with the deeds.
Right, and he, it goes back to like the, the, you know, stone wall.
The stone wall.
And he even says regardless, like, this is still what it is, based upon those deeds.
Yeah, again, it's simple, we don't get a problem.
I don't even go down here, honestly, I don't wanna fight with anyone, I just.
I don't care if they have a pool, I really don't, I just don't wanna be liable for anything, that's all, I don't care, because we don't even use that.
That's what comes out.
The pool needs to be on their property, right?
Yeah, so.
Right, and that's the thing, it's not their pool, and it's not our pool, that there's a discrepancy.
Inspection for the electrical inspection, put the pool heater, so, I mean, that's between you and them, but this is, I'm here for this. So we need to figure out what we need to do with this.
Yeah.
So that pool, where they have it on their survey, let's just say it's partly here, they're moving it quite a bit in.
Right, exactly.
Right, yeah, but they're going.
Are they moving it?
This is nine feet, and theirs is butt into the line, so they.
And they've both had the surveys done multiple times.
Right.
Yeah.
I don't know what.
I mean, if that's nine feet and they're providing seven feet, that makes it still two feet over.
Right, if that one's right.
That's right.
We don't know which one's right.
Or if this one's right.
We don't know, they could be wrong.
Only we can say, only we can say, if this were nine feet this way, then we don't have to worry about it anywhere.
Correct.
If rather than.
No, they can't make it up.
If you can be put by nine feet, then.
Well, they can't, they're going, putting it up against their deck.
Yeah, right.
At this point.
And then you do that, that, that was second, that it, it belongs to them, which we are, you have to step as you like, you said.
Yes, right.
You don't wanna move it and still have it over.
Yeah.
So.
It's just important, we don't wanna have that, we don't care if they have a pool.
No, we don't have a either, right, we just do whatever, our super says.
Exactly, they do, exactly.
It's impossible to put the pool on this side of the deck, because it's second.
Yeah, they did a lot of topology here, too, I mean, they really can't put it anywhere else but on that side.
The property does this.
Keep the hill.
It's just such a weird.
Yes.
I don't know how they subdivided that, it's just crazy.
Again, there's, there's an issue with the Schedule A that goes with the deeds.
Yeah.
Somewhere, one, something was filed.
Right.
And they didn't change the Schedule A.
Yeah.
Or there's an error in the Schedule A, the numbers.
And that's like, we're gonna take a lot of digging.
I mean, I don't even know.
Someone's got to pay an attorney to dig that up.
Yes, he moved this up to the attorney's office. I don't even know where there's something, where their wells are, they should be on my property back here. How do you find out in information out? So I forget they have to dig all this out?
Oh, the house down here that had their trampoline on their property?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That one, that, that's not that old, that house, when we went to give them a C O, we saw they cleared part of your property and an extra neighbor.
Yeah.
And I personally contacted the man that you bought this from.
Yeah.
And I contacted this guy, and I said, these people, someone's gonna buy this house and they're trespassing on your property, so if you're gonna do something about it, do it now. Because they put some little bushes, they said, no, we're not, but I said, but you cleared it in an arch and put bushes on your property, what became yours. And both owners were made aware of it, and they did not.
And they told us nothing.
So then this person, they say, oh.
They told us nothing, they walked the house, too, they had a verbal agreement about that.
Yeah, so all that grass is there, and, I don't know, just kids running around, there's deeds everywhere, like.
Yeah, we're very, we're all about sovereignty.
What we do is, we, did someone want this, I don't know, sell it?
You could, you could subdivide it, sell it, it's my own thing.
I'm just throwing this out here, you know, all the things about our pool, we could take it for ten years, or something like that.
You could, if you wanted to get, I'm just throwing out, I guess, you could to get rid of this and not have the liability to worry about mowing it. You could offer for sale part of this to the Penfields and part of it to the house down here. And then you'd have to go to the planning board and do a lot line realignment, so that we're aligned. And then new deeds would be written to clarify who owns what.
Right, is this deed value, if I can sell the piece of parcel, this tiny piece of parcel, would, does that decrease the value of our home?
I don't think so, because it's a tail.
Yeah, not prime location.
I mean, because, no, we're not planning on moving, and we wanna, we love our neighbors, but we just wanna, like, we don't, we don't use it.
So when we, so when we were at the Penfields' house, your house is the one looking up the hill?
Yeah.
Up, up, looking up the hill?
Yeah, is it, you, you have that chicken coop looking in, in the back?
No, that's, 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 um, the grounds.
They're, they're on Robinson, right?
They're on Robinson, they're the first house on the lot, or the second.
Okay, on Robinson Gardens.
Got it.
This has been a mess out there.
Yeah, we have a.
So, I mean, like, I don't. Do you guys want?
I'm gonna buy it, we can buy it, it was, I mean, like I said, something, I'm sorry, it's too big.
Right, well, that, that's something we're looking besides, and I think, right?
Right.
Yeah, you relax. Right.
Yes, so can we, can the change be ruled by, can stipulate, can the property line used to be defined? You know?
Like, add a homeowner, add a homeowner's property, so that's what it is, and then it's not a residence. So, you know, we don't want issues or anything, we don't.
You're up here or leave.
It's just unfortunate that this doesn't add up.
I think, however, for your sake, the only thing you could do is do so. As for the. The only thing I think you would do tonight is as for a smaller pool, then you're definitely not on their property. Because it's a tiny pool.
We don't know where.
A smaller pool, can you, can you get a little closer to the house?
Make it smaller?
Could you get it just a little, if you could get it that extra two feet?
Right.
Two and a half feet, I think it is, right?
If they can adjust to a half feet in Delta.
You're saying they need nine and a half feet, they're asking for seven, so I'm asking them, they could do nine and a half or ten. From the property line, then they're definitely not on your property.
And, and then off, off a book later on, you can negotiate.
Right, and then you can do.
Jump right in, but after the gates open, but not before.
Yeah.
You could do that.
Looks like it's, it's, let's become lawyers, you see?
Right.
We could know that.
I guess.
I mean, I, the only thing we could do would be to give them a zero-foot variance, so it's right of the property line. Which would be ten feet from their property, what's that? It would be ten feet from their property.
They're asking for seven feet, I'm saying, if it's ten, then they're definitely on their property.
Well, it's either ten feet off the property line or zero feet off the property line.
What a condition that the debt.
Right, because we don't know which property line, so we would have to give them a zero-foot variance.
And then it would be out of property lines. But we wanna make sure it's on their property, yeah, but it would definitely be out of property though.
All right, guys, 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 one meeting, right?
Thank you.
For your thoughts, but that's, we gotta figure out, have we got to distinct, you know, just, three points, just have a seat.
You got it.
So, yeah, one conversation.
Did you wanna see that? I asked him. Tom wanted to see that, that plot, that plot.
Sure.
Will you have a copy of your survey?
So what, so what, what we were, what we were discussing and, and the Penfields were entertaining was that if we pulled the pool back far enough that we were sure it was off the property line, then we, we can rule tonight, otherwise we can't rule. You know, we, we can't basically roll the dice, right, on, on whether if it is or it isn't, kind of the thing. So if, if, if we get the math right. How can we get the math right?
Well, there's no way, because it's, it's either nine feet off or it's zero feet off.
Right.
So, so we could, we could approve zero feet, but then they'd have to republish.
And, and I brought up a point privately to them, be, make, gonna have to make the pool smaller, can't be eighteen feet.
That's the other.
Well, it can be if it's just closer to the house. I thought they had a little room, I thought they had a little room between the deck and where they, if you saw where they originally laid out the. It looked like they had room, where they could have brought it closer to the house.
Yes.
And it could still be an eighteen-foot pool.
Mhm, yeah.
Can be done if we, if they're willing to move that right.
But can we be sure?
But the problem is, what I think we said, the problem is, because we advertised a seven foot, we may have to republish again, that means we could not rule today. So when Barbara comes, we'll ask that question, but it looks like we may not able to rule on today. Even if you bring two and, two foot and nine inch inside, that means according to their survey, you are borderline. But because that, that variance would be zero feet, and what we advertised initially is seven feet. To, to fix that one, they have to republish again, and that will take two weeks from now. So unless when she comes, we can verify. So one alternative is that way.
The worst case is that their survey is right.
Yes.
And you're zero feet off, or, I mean, the, the, zero feet is the most we can give you. Because we can't give you people's property.
On an eighteen-foot pool?
On eighteen, right.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, but if they move even, they still can get zero and eighteen feet, right? We closer to the house.
Correct.
So if there, we see the eighteen feet.
That's correct.
But they can ma- make it zero feet by moving it more, then it, we should not have objection for eighteen feet. We objection with zero or, or like two, two foot nine inch overlap.
So a third, a third survey?
Thank you, Bob.
Third survey, okay. It's like a puzzle.
Right, yes.
So if the, if they, they were to slide the pool over.
Thanks, Bob.
To their house, to their house, nine feet.
Or, or you say ten, why can't?
Nine and, nine and a half.
And then, well, they need nine point five, according to.
Nine point eight.
Because they're saying two and a half feet and seven feet, that's nine point five, so if we say ten feet, we know they're on their property, correct?
Yeah.
Right, if it's ten feet from their prop, from their property line, that they believe is their property line, not what you believe, but what they believe. If it's ten feet off of that, it's definitely not on their property, right? Correct?
Right, we don't, if, if their survey is correct, right, we'd have to get that pool at least, say, ten feet.
Nine feet.
Right, they're, they're asking for seven, so if we ask them to move it three more feet.
Correct.
Which I believe you have the room to move it three more feet. Then it's ten feet, and they're definitely not on their property, they're on their property, I understand that, that we're going off of their plans.
Right, yeah.
And then if that ends up changing, I don't know what, what they would have to do, but they have to.
So I have a question, your deck, you guys were out there, well, how high are the railings on the deck?
I don't remember.
So here's my question, they're saying they have five feet right now to where they wanna put the pool. If it gets slid closer to the deck, three feet, then the pool is only two feet from the deck. So that, the deck will have to just be amended, if it needs to be, because I don't know how tall it is, that somebody, and you have children, can't just go from the deck jumping into the pool for the two feet.
I don't believe the deck was high enough, the deck was almost ground level.
So you'd have to, on the side of the pool, which is the side, those railings would have to be made taller.
Okay.
So that, that, just so that we're clear, if they slide the pool closer, the whole reason to stay away is so that it isn't that close to the deck. Now, people have pools up against their deck, so as long as the railings are tall enough.
Okay.
It's a safety issue.
The, the deck is less than one foot high, am I right, or?
Yeah, it's just, yes.
Yeah, so the deck height is not even.
It's not where the ground?
Yeah.
Yes, it's almost on the ground.
Yeah, it's on the ground, right, right.
All right, never mind.
So it may not be big, it's safety concern.
I said it was the ground.
Right, that's a concern.
I'm so confused, all right.
Right, 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 so that's not big safety concern.
So you'll have a ladder that locks up.
Yeah, we have to put a ladder in there, that's.
All right, never mind, yep.
So only.
Just work for you.
Right, right.
So, well, we need to republish and re.
Yeah, we have to republish because.
Well, i- i- if we say ten.
No, it's less of a variance.
Yes, right.
You only have to republish when the variance becomes larger, not smaller.
Well, I, I think we were thinking, we, we give them, the worst-case scenario is that the, the other survey is right and we give them zero.
It would end up being a zero.
But now, how do you know tonight?
Well, we, there's no way for us to know.
We really don't.
So if we go off their survey, we give them ten, it's off their property.
If we give them ten, it's definitely not on their property, it might be right on the property line or very close to the property line, but that, we don't know, that would be.
Yeah, so we do that point.
And it would only ever be an issue if they have a new surveyor that now comes up with the third.
So I can tell you from speaking with both Michael and with Erica, they've both had their surveys done multiple times, correct? Multiple times, at, at, at a substantial cost.
Yes.
But without an attorney going back through the weeds into the recordings to find out where the, there's an error, obviously.
Yeah.
But somebody has to pay to have that error found.
Right.
So crazy thought, if we asked to do survey by, both property by one surveyor.
They're still gonna come up with the same answer, because the Schedule As are incorrect.
Right, yeah.
No matter what, whoever looks, one gives you this map.
Yeah.
And one gives you this map.
Right.
It builds the same guy, doesn't it?
Yeah, because it's a science, they go back through Schedule As and they measure off of things. So somewhere there's an error in the Schedule A, you know, the one that says fifty-eight feet southwest greets?
Yeah.
Whoever's looking at them, one reads her Schedule A and comes up with her survey, and someone's reading his Schedule A and coming up with his survey. So as you said, there's been a lot of lot lines and subdivisions over the years, and somewhere, somebody made a mistake in a filing.
Well, I know this one, one second, my surveyor, he was all the way around the street, and he went all by that rock wall, and he said this thing dates back to like nineteen, early nineteen hundreds, and he's like, I went as far back as I can.
So surveyors use telephone poles, they use rock walls, they, they go back to verify their map on this. So I don't know if you're gonna get an answer.
Right, so. So they don't have to be published, right?
That's right, that's what I think.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah. So Barbara, so, so we're moving this forward.
Right.
So if, if, if you folks are agreeable to move the pool closer to the house, right? Basically, that ten feet that we were talking about, right? Then we won't have to republish.
No.
But the variance changes.
Yes.
You'll be basing your variance on her survey.
Correct.
Oh, so we are making more space means less variance, if you go with that way, yeah.
So if there's an error on hers.
Yeah, that's true.
It won't be on his property.
Yeah, right.
If the error is his, it could be somewhere in the middle, but you can only go with, this is a licensed, as-built.
Yes.
this is a licensed as-built, a certified by the guy's license that this is correct. He has one, but right now you're only concerned with.
Right.
Her survey on her pool.
Yeah, right, right, right. Yeah, so we don't have to republish it. If we move by nine and a half feet, nine, 9.8 feet.
So if we say 10, just.
Yeah, 10, to be safe, right, yes.
So we, I mean, we did see that the property line, what they had marked, not saying that it was the right property, but what they, was right up against the pool.
Oh, yeah.
It was, I mean, it was literally right up against the pool. So could you do 10 feet?
Yeah, we can.
Rather than seven.
So then we can move forward. If they can do that 10, then we can, we can move forward.
So then I would change this to providing 10.
10, right.
And needing 15 foot.
Correct, right. That's makes it easier.
Are you okay with that? It's not on your property.
It, it won't be on your property then.
Can you just, where did I go if we, if between them and I, like if we want to get rid of that parcel? Where do we have to go?
Get yourself a surveyor or a civil engineer. Survey's probably cheaper. And you already have these surveys, like you could, if you're going to give them, sell them whatever. They'll do a map of both and they'll take out the line and put the new line for whatever you're doing. And then at the planning board, they approve that. And then they'll make a mile, which is a plastic map. Once the next planning board approves it, it will get filed, hopefully with the right Schedule As. And once it's filed, that piece will be theirs and you won't own it or be responsible. If you wanted to talk to them and give them some. If you want to do anything, it's your property, you have to contact the others and make a deal.
Barbara.
Sorry.
I don't, I don't mean to be rude.
Sorry.
But that's a discussion we'd have another time. Because we want to finish up here, right, with your variance. So I'm going to reread the variance that you need and then we'll throw to a vote, okay? All right, so where 25 feet to the side, right yard property line is required, the applicant can provide 10 feet for the installation of an 18-foot above ground pool, thus requesting a variance of 15 feet. Okay? Do we understand, right, you, and you folks, right, understand what we're trying to do? Sliding the pool over. So we get it off your property, gets a little closer to your house, but you'll be able to move forward, okay?
So just for the records, just remember that we're not sure if it's their property.
Correct.
Because we're still saying get away from their property. So according, like I said, our survey, we're in our property.
Right, right. All right.
Yeah, that's to move this forward, like Pete said. I mean, that's not the way you want to go. That's up to you.
No, yeah, it's fine, yes, but.
I mean, we also know, because we were there, there's not a lot of room to put a pool. So we know that you're kind of, you know, where you can put it.
Yeah, that's true.
So we're trying to help you out as we, with the circumstances that were brought to our attention tonight.
Yeah, but since we're talking about that, is any way that the town can just think about it? Because like you said, it's a mistake that somebody in the town made.
The town won't look into that for you. One of you have to hire your own attorney to figure that out.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Do you, do you, you okay with moving forward? Okay. All right then, could I have a, a.
Motion to. Well, we have to close the public hearing.
We have a motion, right, to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close.
Have a second.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
So move, could I have a motion to grant or deny the variance as amended?
I'll make a motion to grant the variance. The requested variance is, will not produce an undesirable change of character in the neighborhood. It will not create a substantial detriment to nearby properties. There is really no other feasible method available to pursue, to achieve benefit you seek other than the requested variance. The requested variance is substantial. The proposed variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on physical, environmental conditions in the neighborhood district. And the alleged difficulty is not self-created because of the property, the way the property
Second.
Second. Tom, second. Roll call please be.
Yes.
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 Yes, as amended.
Yep. Thank you.
Thanks, you're all set.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck, guys.
Let's keep thinking.
It's going to break. Going to go on a break.
We're going to take five.
All right, next up on the agenda, public hearing, appeal number 237795, area variance. Jay and Dana?
Yes.
Van?
Van Benskoden.
That's right. Seeking an area variance, section 24037 of District Regulations in an R40 zoning district. Where 50 feet to the rear yard property line is required, the applicant can provide 10 feet for the legalization of a 352 square foot shed with overhang, thus requesting a variance of 40 feet. The property is located at 92 Hackensack Heights Road on 2.2 acres and is identified as tax grid number 625902732509 in the town of Wapanger. Could I have a motion, please, open the public hearing?
Motion, open the public hearing.
Second.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
So move. All right, folks, just a brief description of what you need and why you need it.
We have a 12, 12 or 10 by 16 shed, 10 feet off the property line. We need a 40 foot variance.
And the shed was there when you purchased the property, is that correct?
Pre-existing, yeah.
It's a commercial property, I think, behind you, you said, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, all around.
Yeah, it was going around. Behind, behind him, I think, was more, more wooded and wet, man, right? Behind you.
All wooded.
It was wooded, but you know, no one's going to put a house on it.
It was just a lot.
Right, exactly.
All wooded behind him.
Exactly. Very heavily wooded. I had no idea that that road went that far back.
That was a long ride.
Yeah, yeah, really. Yeah, we were out there, all went out there Saturday, saw, saw what you got going on. I don't have any additional questions, if you guys do. I mean, pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
You guys all set? Anybody in the audience?
Nope.
Have any comments on the application?
Motion to close.
Could I have a motion?
Motion to close public hearing.
Second. Second, Tom, on favor? So move. Motion to grant or deny the applicant this variance.
I'll make a motion to grant the variance. Benefit can be achieved by no other feasible means. There's no observable change in the neighborhood, given the typology of the surrounding properties. The request is substantial. There's no adverse physical or environmental effect and it is not self-created, and so it was existing when you purchased the property.
All right, have a second. Roll call.
Mr. Delaport?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Ball?
Yes.
Yes, so your variance has been granted. Thank you for being patient.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you, guys.
All right, good night. All right, next order of business. I have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Can I, can I just bring up the fact that I would like to have clarification as to if this board is allowed to hire our own attorney? Or if we have to steal, deal with the attorney that is appointed by the town, all right? I believe this board has its own right to hire its own specialist. And I would like to just know a clarification on that.
I don't know the answer to that.
I know for a fact that the planning board is allowed to, to pick their own consultants, but I will verify that for you and have that information in an email in the next few days.
Okay, wonderful.
And the, the zoning determination, what's the timeframe for that? Were we supposed to approve that this week, so that was in the agenda, or is it?
You mean the interpretation?
Interpretation, yeah.
So I'll be making, so I'll be working on that Tuesday with Jim. So I have my rough draft, but I need the attorney to go over it, the legal out, for the legalities, to make sure what I'm saying stands.
Okay.
And then you'll get that next week to see in advance of the meeting, so then you can.
Which, do, do we have Alpine Commons in two weeks, so they?
Excuse me?
Or is Alpine Comments coming back next meeting?
It's three weeks, right? Next week's a bye week. I call it a bye week. So it's not, it's, it's two weeks from next Tuesday.
Right, yeah, it's three weeks, right.
So they'll be on the agenda?
Yes. So I will have that out to you by the end of business next week. That gives you almost two weeks to review it. I will also send it to the Alpine group. And that gives them two weeks to decide if they want to challenge it with you, where, to see if you'll uphold or overturn my interpretation, which is their, your right and their right to try.
And based upon what you decide, the next agenda would be updated potentially to reflect?
Well, they would have to write to be and amend theirs before. Otherwise, I don't think it would be a discussion item because unless they're challenging it in writing. Which I would think they probably will, I don't know. So let me finish writing it and then get it out to you.
So even though the, the challenge or don't challenge, next meeting we should be having some discussion about it.
Yes.
Right, yeah.
Yes, I believe so. And the next meeting will probably be light. You only have.
Yes.
One person coming back. And I think just once I get the size of the shed, it's a quick one.
That's it, right.
Do you have any more? So she has two more. So there isn't a lot, although you've got almost three weeks.
All right, you guys have been working us hard. But we didn't, we didn't officially adjourn, I don't think.
No.
All right, so have a motion to adjourn, please.
I have Tom, Tom's already motioned.
I motioned.
I seconded.
Second, on favor?
Aye.
So move, all right, we are adjourned.